Does anybody notice Ginny coming tonight? Did you want to move over, Brian, if she's not here? If she continued to move back, just... Just take one of the chairs out and go to Tom's room and you'll be sat. Okay, folks, it is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July the 8th, 2025. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Myers-Dolebura Council. We're going to rise for the flag ceremony. And who wants to give the prayer? Volunteers for the prayer. Clarence will give the prayer. Everyone, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we thank you for the gathering this evening to make the better decisions for Myers-Dale and get over flood and everything that kind of control. So with these, we wish the best for everyone. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Clarence. Very nice, very nice prayer. Patty, the roll call, please.
Mr. Ackerman.
Here.
Mr. Bear.
Here.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Nagy.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mrs. Canary is absent. Mr. Smith.
Here.
So Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Olivia is absent. Who there is police and...
Okay, thank you, Patty. The minutes, we do have two sets of minutes. Our regular meeting was on June the 10th, and I read through them and they looked okay to me. And then we did have a short special meeting on June the 19th. It was a Thursday night. And those many minutes looked okay as well. So let's have a discussion or a motion to approve both sets. And a second.
I have a discussion when you get to it.
Okay, you made a motion. Is there a second? Ron made the motion. A second. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so in the June 10th, since that's a matter, Mark, you're aware of litigation. Can we just discuss that in executive session?
With what, the actual minutes of litigation, you mean?
With here. From June 10th.
I'm opposed to going into executive session. I read the minutes. I think they're fine. You could make an objection, Karen, if you want. We'll note that. Is there any other discussion? Okay, because we have a motion to accept the minutes as read. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Karen is opposed. It's unanimous. The minutes have been approved. Okay, with council's permission, I'd like to let our management coordinator, emergency management coordinator, Kevin, he would like to get down and help the firemen tonight. So let's do your report and then you can go help the firemen. Is that okay with everybody?
All right, there's some deadlines that are coming up for the flood damage, for filing for compensation to Small Business Administration for physical damages. July 21st, 2025. For environmental or economical damages is February of '26. So you apply for those. If you don't get something with that, then you can apply for the PMA D.R.A.P., and that's August 25th, 2025. In the North Street Bridge, there was debris up against it that's been removed today. And there's debris in the township that they're going to work on this week also. Other than that, really don't have much to report. Most people have any questions.
Questions? Okay, we have the dates and everything. So tell all the firemen we said hello. Okay, Terry, the finances.
All right, we have a balance tonight of $178,388.68. And we need bills for approval to be paid for $1,998.49.
Did you get Mark's bill on that, too? His came in late. Is that included in Terry's? Okay.
There's $1,026 for Valentine Law. And then there was a bill that came in from Aspire Grant Writing for $187.50, and I have a call into them. Supposedly, it was some H. Johnson at the June council meeting. There wasn't anybody here last month, was there?
Okay, Terry made the motion. Will you include those two bills that we received from Mark Valentine?
Yes.
What was the other one, Patty?
Aspire Grant Writing.
We want to question how many of these were there?
Don't leave that one out? Okay.
I'll make the motion for the $1998.49 plus Mark's invoice.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous.
Also, under finance, we have future finance requests.
Terry, I put that on, and I'd like to discuss. Karen Nagy had made a request for certain information, which she's entitled to receive. There's no question about that. But I have some concerns about the way it was done. So I'm just going to read through this. And it's an open discussion, but let's just start here. Karen sent an email that went only to Patty and to Mark Valentine. No other council members were included in this. Myself, or Terry, who's head of finance, or Tom Smith, who's on the financial committee. The email was sent, the timestamp is, it looks like it's Friday, June 23rd, no, excuse me, Friday, June 20th, at 3:27 PM. Now Patty leaves the building at 3:30. So, and here's the request. "Hi, I haven't been doing my fiduciary duties. How many credit cards does the borough have? Do we have a separate gas card? I'd like to review all the credit card statements for the past six months to start with. I'd also like to all the bank statement for six months. Let me know when they're ready. Next week, and I'll stop over and pick them up." So I responded back an email and asked Karen if we could hold off on that request and discuss it tonight. Patty, the request that Karen made was occurring right at the very last week of June. She had payroll to do, end of June reports, the end of the second quarter reports, the garbage bills you had to get done. And then she found out that there's a pension audit, which she didn't know about, came along. It's a routine pension audit that we do every four years? So I sent an email asking if this could be held off. We could discuss it, maybe get some other members involved. And next thing you know, Wednesday, we received a right to know from Karen Nagy. And perfectly legal. And the right to know basically says about the same things on here. What she wants, all bank statements included, but not limited to checking, savings, money markets, and credit cards for 2025. If I wish a high level of overview for prior periods, I will make that request next. Where account numbers are redacted, please write the account number it relates to in its place. So Patty called me actually after the first request. And some of these requests that Karen wants aren't actually available to the general public. They involve bank statements, and certain things have to be redacted off of those. Patty didn't quite know how to handle it. So we were going back and forth. Patty felt that there were some things on there that did need to be redacted. So we reached out to our solicitor. And I think this could have all been handled a lot more simply. So I passed, I'm going to pass these green sheets out to council. This is what Karen's request has cost us. I took these figures from the Mark's last bill, which we voted to pay tonight. I'm not going to read them off. You can read them there. But you come up with a total of $440, including a one-hour call to our solicitor from Karen Nagy. When all we had to do was bring this up tonight, make a request, and she's entitled to the information. But, so this annoys me a little bit. And I think it upset Patty in that she had all this stuff to do. She didn't know how to move forward, what need to be redacted. And Patty, in your time as, in your employment here, forty-some years, have you ever, as a council member, ever requested right to know from the members, the bodies that they belong to? It never happened in my term. So I just think, Karen, you're going to get the information. You can respond here, too. We'll have an open discussion on it. But I just think $440 wasted, when all we had to do is have a little communication. So that's basically it on that. And then you wonder why certain people don't respect Karen. You have problems with the employees. So I'm done. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, so the one thing I would add is, we don't have any kind of procedure in place. I looked at, and Patty had sent me a while back. We do have procedures in place for certain things with council, but we don't have any kind of procedure in place with requesting or looking at those things from a fiduciary standpoint. So to that end, I mean, without a procedure in place, it's hard to steer, you know?
So word stands now, I mean, she's going to get the information. Patty's working on it. When you file a right to know, then the borough council or any entity has five days to respond. But we asked for the extension, which is almost automatic, so we have 30 days. So she will be able to receive the information. I understand, though, a right to know is somewhat meaningless in this for what she wants, because you have to win and view it in the borough office. Is that right?
Well, even from a council standpoint, anything that's a bank account, credit card account, financial account, would be the easiest way to say it. They're not supposed to leave the actual premises. You're supposed to view them on premises and not make copies. From a right to know standpoint, most of that is not applicable to a right to know. But she does have a right to see it as a council member.
As we all do. We're not saying she can't see it, but I just wanted to speak publicly that I thought this was very, very poorly handed. Karen, if you have a remark to make, go ahead. If not, Mr. Chairman, it's your committee here.
2026 budget process.
I'm not sure what was...
I just wanted to know how you wanted to handle that. These guys wanting to do the budget or the whole foot, the pencil coffee together when it's completed.
What was council's blessing? I would say, Patty, let's just do it like you always do. And I'd like to do it sooner rather than later. Like, maybe we get together in September? August or September and go through this and go from there?
In the last couple of years, I think the finance committee saw it first, and then council. I can't remember. I know you prepared it every year. At least, I think you did.
Well, we had said maybe about starting our committee meetings up in September so we could maybe have the budget, your version. I want discussion on this. I'm just trying to... If we would have planned to have our committee meetings back up in September, and the finance committee, we could review the budget there. That's a good suggestion, Mr. Solicitor. So what does council think of that? Tom makes a motion. Ron seconds. And all those in favor say aye. Of that, aye? Anybody opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, one last thing. Grant report, holiday decorations deadline, August 1st.
We got late this afternoon. I sent it to Patty. I don't know if she had a chance to see it or not. Norris sent us the proof to the rendering to approve. They are going to, since it's a custom, it's the Nativity Star. They want to get them ordered, so we have them in August. So, I don't know, Patty. Did you get that sent around?
No, I didn't get it.
Okay. We really should vote on the approval of that. Let me send it around. Maybe we can come back to that. I'll send it around.
My concern is that there's a deadline on the final report for the Alexandria Community Foundation, and that's August 1st. But if they don't get the lights and the bill till sometime in August, we're going to have to, somebody's going to have to request an extension for that final report.
I don't think that'll be a problem. I would just email them and say, you're not going to get the bill? Or do we want to pay for them in advance? I don't know. I don't think, they're very nice to work with. I think we just send them an email and tell them that we hope to have them by the end of August or early September, and we'll get them the receipts then.
Do we need a motion to do that, Mark?
Yeah, probably. It'd probably be the best to do that. Not only for that, but also if you're going to pay it or not ahead of time.
I make the motion if you go ahead and pay for it and then get reimbursed.
Okay. Clarence nods a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. And a motion to request the extension. Karen, do you want to make that one? Okay, and Terry, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous.
That's it for finance, Jeff.
Okay, and that request for final closeout?
Yeah, that was a second move.
Okay, that's, okay. Okay, that takes care of the finances, Mr. Chairperson. Okay, guests, Larry Phillip, building committee, and sidekick Roy. Count. Welcome. We see some drawings here, so we're anxious to hear what you have to say.
Obviously, we came in here and looked over the building for compliance for basically ADA compliance of the building. And we concentrated on the first floor, because that's the floor that's being used. Didn't see much sense in looking at the other two very deeply. We did do a basic floor plan of them, but we didn't really look into them that deeply, because you're not using them, and there's no accessible route to them currently, anyway. So if you look at the findings here, it actually comes out pretty well. Existing parking, you know, number one there on the findings. The existing parking, as indicated out back there, is being accessible. Is compliant for gradient and everything like that. Recommendation would be that the lines be painted and, you know, it add the universal accessibility symbol there as well, so that everyone knows that that is your ADA compliant space and that it's being accessible. So that's a pretty simple fix. The existing sidewalk from that space is also in compliance for gradient and width. So that, there's no recommendations there at all. That's actually compliant as it is. The existing ramp coming in the side there is also compliant for slope and width. The only thing necessary there would be the handrails at the top of the ramp need to be extended a minimum of one foot beyond the top of the ramp. So when the handrail comes up to the top, it has to go one foot past that top step. That's how code calls that out to be, and that's something that it's missing. The men's room, of course, we all know, is not in compliance. And that, if you look at sheet eight there, you'll see the existing layout as well as the recommendation for what to do to create that into an ADA compliant restroom. Now, first of all, the doorway is too narrow, two foot ten inches. It's not that it's too narrow of a doorway. It's too narrow of a doorway with a door on it. So obviously, you could remove the door. There's no reason for the door to be there. You don't see, you know, there's no vision path there that would be a reason to leave the door there. And we're doing this a lot more, especially in schools, where the common use area, where they wash their hands and everything, is visible from the doorway, and then all the stalls are private. So there's really no reason for the door to be there. So that's as simple as removing the door, and then the room becomes accessible. And then you can see the reconfiguration of the facilities in there to make the facilities within the room accessible. It pretty much, you know, it's not a major overhaul. I mean, it is if you, you know, depending on how you look at it, but there's no need to make bust-out walls or anything of that nature. The room, the space in there is enough that we could make that room compliant with the footprint just moving the facilities. Then if you go onto the ladies restroom, which is the next page, again, you have the same situation with the door. Although you have a three-foot door, you know, the space that's in front of the door there is not adequate to pull a wheelchair up in and pull the door open. There's a minimum space there required, and it doesn't meet that. So again, the recommendation would be to remove the door. And if you look at, on that one, you put a privacy screen basically inside there that blocks a view into the room, straightforward view into the room. So you come in the room and you go around that privacy screen. And then you, pretty much, the room itself is okay as it is set up, because it's a much larger room, and the facilities in there are in compliance other than, you know, that doorway and installing that screen. So that's a very minor fix for that room. And then, you know, it was brought up to the possibility of having the small restroom down here that's in the staff room down there that being made into an ADA compliant unisex restroom. Now, that can be done. But what you have to remember is if you do this room, the men's room and the ladies' room here, and make them ADA compliant, that room doesn't need to be touched. If you wanted to make it ADA compliant just for staffing and keep it as a private restroom for your staff and have it ADA compliant, you could do that with the, as we've shown on that drawing as well. But that is totally an optional fix. It doesn't need to be done if the other two rooms are made accessible. So that one could be done if you wanted, or it could be left as it is.
What would we do if we wanted to have these two restrooms accessible and have a family room? Like, say, in the ladies' room, or can you do that?
If you wanted to have a family restroom, you mean?
Yes, with either one, the ladies' or the men's?
Oh, if you have a family restroom, it has to be exactly that, a family restroom. It's not a ladies' or a men's. It's a family restroom. It has to be accessible to either gender, all genders, because a family, obviously, is all genders. So it would have to be its own room somewhere, which that little bathroom down there would be a good place to put it, if you wanted to. But it would be inconvenient in the fact that doorways going through there are not compliant. The doorway going into it is not compliant. And then you would be running people, the public, down the hall through that other room into that bathroom. So it really doesn't lend itself well to doing that for that purpose. If you wanted to do that in a room somewhere, you would have to find a space and create another restroom just for that purpose.
What I'm getting at here is if you could have, as an example, the Maple Festival is here, and the Lions Club has a lady stationed outside the ladies' room. And if a situation occurs, like where someone needs a family bathroom, the lady will go in and wait as it clears out, then let the individuals go in who need the privacy of a family room, and she'll wait outside. And then, after that, it's back open to the ladies. We were thinking if we could have a signed family room and use it as a ladies' booth, with, to kind of combine the two, since this building... But you're saying that wouldn't work. You can't do that, that we put both, like you could go in... Okay, ladies and family. I'm not a lawyer, or I'm just suggesting. And then the individuals, if they had that need, would go in, and there'd be a lock on the door. And then they would be in there, whatever type, you know, facility they had to use. And when they're finished, they come out, the door's unlocked, and then anybody can go in.
Basically, what you're saying is, if there's a family in that room, until that family's out of that room, there's not another female in this building that can use a restroom.
Correct.
And that is discrimination.
Okay.
And so I don't think that you'd want to do that for that reason.
You said the women's restroom can be converted to a unisex?
No. No.
Why is...
The women's restroom is already pretty much ADA compliant as it is, as a ladies' room. Just needs to have that, a few...
The men's room, it needs a little bit.
The men's room needs the facilities moved around and changed in.
Okay.
Yes. Now...
A family restroom is just, it's an option. It's not a requirement.
Correct. Correct.
It may be nice, but...
So we're looking into a grant for this. So my question, when we met way back when, was we talked about leaving the existing restroom and then building a partition straight across to in front of the entrance door, and then making that the ADA, because it would be nice for our borough staff to maintain the existing. We would have plumbing as far as supply lines and everything. And then we could leave a large portion of that room for records, but we could also, you know, just build a partition, toilet, sink, and have a family restroom. Why can't we do that?
So basically, you're saying, put another room in there, leave the existing restroom as it is, put another room beside it, make that the family restroom.
Yeah.
That's an option that could be looked at. I was under the impression from the last meeting when we were here that that was an option that the majority of the board did not want to look into.
Are we talking about this room down here, or this one up here?
One, the one that's a large board.
What, you're in on that?
Yeah.
The issue is, like, if I have a friend that has a son that's handicapped, and we're here, it would sure be nice to be able to give them privacy to use a facility. It would just be nice. Instead of, you know, I'm a female and I have a male child. Am I taking that child in the women's restroom? Or am I taking that child in the men's restroom?
Right, that's...
If we want to keep this building long-term, I think it'd be nice.
There is also the option, and I know a lot of people don't want to hear this, but I'm going to say it out loud anyway, non-gender-specific restrooms. I mean, the common areas are to wash your hands, all the facilities... I mean, the common areas are to wash your hands, all the facilities are private rooms, private individual rooms where a male or a female can go in right beside each other and nobody cares. Because there's, once you're in that room, you're in a private room where the door goes all the way to the floor, the whole of the ceiling, it's completely closed in. That could be done in both restrooms, and you could have however total number of facilities that could be used by any gender. That's...
That might be something that...
That's something that we're seeing more and more of. Uh, there's, there's a few places we've been where that is the case. I don't know, like out, I know out in Kansas City, there was an airport we were in where it was that way. You walked into the restroom, there were men, women, all washing their hands at the same place, and then turned around and they went in a door and they closed it, and there was a private facility in there for each one of them. That's an option that could be done in a place like this as well, which makes the whole number of facilities available to all genders. I don't know, there's a lot of communities that aren't ready for that, but whenever you're in there, where you, in that common area where there's nothing going on there but washing your hands, as soon as you go in the other room and close the door, you're all by yourself and there's nobody, nobody can, you know, you're private. That's an option you could look at as well, but just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm sure we're not going to decide this tonight, but you're giving us our options and we appreciate it, so continue.
Okay, and like, like I mentioned briefly, most of the rooms, the other rooms, the entry doors are not ADA compliant, and that's because of them being recessed, like you see there. There's no room, there's a door inside that recess, which many of them are, there's no room for someone in a wheelchair to pull up and actually get hold of that latch and open that door without hitting their chair. They, they need that space. So those are the, those are the areas where those doors could be made to be by swing doors where they push through both directions. If they need to be a door on there, they could be made that way, and then that wouldn't be an option, or I mean, a problem. Then you look at the gym access as well. The doors there are not wide enough. There's a double door system, but each door, each individual door is not wide enough to be ADA compliant. So the option there would be to replace one door with a three-foot minimum door and then put a, either a smaller side light or a smaller door there that would be deadbolted. It wouldn't need to be open unless you wanted it to be open, something of that nature. And that would make your gym accessible if the doors are closed. Okay? And then the other thing was your drinking fountain, it's not accessible. Uh, current code requires a dual fountain, one's lower than the other, maybe for ADA compliance, the other is higher. So that would be, replace the unit with that type of unit. And with that, that's about everything that, that we saw on our review.
So the, the ramp outside this door, even with the swing of the, the door, that's compliant? In other words, to get in and out?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, I was just asking.
It says on here, we were under the assumption that the, the wooden ramp from the sidewalk out here was non-compliant. And I mean, we had an engineer design it, and then all of a sudden we were told, no, it's not compliant. But you say it's compliant...
The door swings out?
No, the ramp itself, because it faced back instead of going forward. I, I don't know what the issue was. I mean, we spent a lot of money to have that...
Marking spaces in the back, why would you want the ramp to go that way?
Well, that, that's what we thought, but anyway, if you say it's compliant...
I guess to that note, there probably should be marked spaces in the back on signage. I mean, I know that's not part of your review, but just for ease.
Well, the, we did say that that space back there should be marked and painted and everything, the one that is back there, yes.
Did you take a look at the ramp that goes into the gym on the back? Did you see, there's a ramp back there, the Alliance...
We didn't look at that ramp, right?
It only required to have accessible, an existing building, it only required to have one accessible entrance to the main function area of the building. So there's no particular reason why that ramp would have to be compliant, so I didn't check for compliance.
Yeah. Thank you, Roy. That's good news, because we had decided, we think with yearly maintenance, we can make that ramp last a long, long time. And the Alliance have pledged to assist us in keeping it painted and each year evaluating it, inspecting it, if you will. So that's good news. So thank you, Roy. I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Patty, if we could put this on the agenda for next month, you don't have to come back, but we have to decide every, I think we should give council members a chance to think about what options we want to do. This should be discussed, I believe, whether it be in their old business or new business, and then we can try to come up with some type of a plan. What would be the next step? I don't know, Karen does the grants, whether we want to hold off on this to try to find grants. Go ahead.
We might want to schedule a special meeting. We owe this information to Steve. His cutoff was, what, Patty, the first day, April? The grant is due in October, early October.
I would be in favor of having a special meeting. These guys wouldn't have to come. And it would be just for this purpose. I, I, I agree with that, really.
And I think we should invite Steve to see what he needs. Like, does, he may need some numbers wrapped around some of this for the grant. I don't know that.
Yeah, and every grant is different. Sometimes they want a precise cost estimate down to the last nut and bolt. Others, they want you to design it to, it's ready to build, ready to go cost-wise, everything. Others want just an estimate, you know, so it's, whatever they would want, we would be able to come up with, you know, given enough time to do so, and...
And the other thing I would say for council to give consideration, when you apply for these grants, as we've seen with the three or four we've gotten now this past year, you go for everything. And Steve will tell you that. Like, you ask for everything, and then you're lucky if you get half of it, you know, whatever. So I honestly believe we ought to go for it all. I mean, I think we ought to seriously consider the family restroom. And if we don't get the money for it, then we focus on the men's and women's.
And a lot of times, what we do is we will do our, like, this will be a public bid project if it goes, because it'll, it'll crack that threshold before it has to go to a public bid. So what we'll do, a lot of times, is we'll do a base bid, and then we'll do optional bids. That way, because if we know our grant money, say our grant money is $300,000, but we have no idea of where the bids will come in. One day, they might come in at 150, one day, they might be 700. No one knows, because you have to, it's a matter of how bad they want it to work and when you bid and how busy people are and the cost of materials. So generally, we'll do a base bid of everything you, you, you know, really couldn't do without, and then you'll do a option one, option two, whatever of things, like, like if you wanted to add the family restroom into one of them bid options. Then if you have enough money, you have them bid, you have them give you prices of every option, and then when the bids come in, you pick whichever options you can afford to build. And so that, that makes a project a lot more feasible, because you, you have choices. You don't have to look at the bids and say, oh, wow, we can't build it because we don't have the option to do so. So by doing that, you, it gives you a lot more options in case your money comes in more or less than you expect as far as the bids go. So there's ways of doing that to, to optimize the efficiency of your project. We can do that as we go further along as well. And, you know, and there may be a point where you have almost enough money to do everything, and the council might decide to throw in the rest to finish it, or they might say, no, we can't, so let's back off to this previous bid option. So it gives you options.
We, thank you for coming over. We appreciate you giving us a lot to think about here. As far as a special meeting, I'm just looking, how soon do we want to have it?
Excuse me. Just one more thing. Can we, just to see, I think the concern is they want to use the room as much as possible for records, and I respect that completely. Can we, could we sketch out what turning, keeping the existing down at the end of the hall and putting the family in and drawing the wall and seeing how much of the room? I mean, I think you'd have over half the room left, which is a big room. Could you do that just quickly?
A family room wouldn't take up that much space, but we could, we could do that. We can do a quick sketch of having that, coming in that doorway and putting the door in with family room right there.
Please.
Yeah, and then, and then people wouldn't have to actually enter that, that official file room or whatever there.
Correct.
It would be a little corridor there at the beginning, and they would turn into that family restroom. So we, we'll sketch...
I think the more information, the more options we have to consider, the better. So I think that's a good idea. Want to go ahead and do that?
We can throw that together and get it to you and give you that option in a moment.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming over. Do we want to set, sorry?
I think you're quite wrong.
Okay. Do we want to try to set a, a meeting for this up now? I'm looking like at, next Tuesday is the Water Authority. We could maybe Tuesday, the 22nd of July. Do we want to wait and see if, when Steve Spohkorn is available and do it that way?
What date?
It would be Tuesday, July 22nd. That would be in two weeks. Any objections? So Tuesday night seems to be a good night for everybody. Okay, well, let's move on, and then if you want to text Steve, we can come back to that. Public comment. Here we go. Okay, you have five minutes to speak. Anyone who wants to speak, keep civil. Everybody stay nice, and public comment is now open. Yes, sir. Give us your name, compare, stand at the podium, and you have five minutes.
My name's Darren Nagy, and I'm here because I've had phone calls, have watched last month's meeting. So I did, and I'm glad to see that we videotaped it, because if some of yous remember, I used to audiotape it. And through the past years, couple of years, I had several agencies come to me for that voice recording. So hopefully, this will help out. But anyway, I'm here to back up what Brian Rutherford said. I don't know how to go about this. I'm freezing here. About his house on Second Street. I, I witnessed a board member's family stalking. I've literally seen it, followed it, absolutely to the T, and I surely hope it does not happen again here today, because there's multiple people in this room that noticed it happened, that, that the stalking happened. So this board member also went to the, me and Brian was on the rifle team together. We sat on the school board together for a while. This board member had also came to the school board meeting and said when that house, when his house went up for sale, that's, they said that there will soon be a opening on the school board, because you cannot be on the school board unless, unless you live in the Myersdale. He was in that district. So I call that taunting is what I'm going to say that is. But it, it, it happened to me, and that's why I'm really here, because on the meetings, I brought up some issues. And after one meeting, I went to leave and somebody was stalking me. And I brought that to the attention of your solicitor and Don Anderson. And before I left, I was advised to call the police to write a report. And so I got ahold of the police department, and the policeman, my sheriff's policeman came to the house, and he said the same thing Mr. Rutherford said, that he said he did not want to write the report because of retaliation or whatever with the board. So he sent me, he got me in contact, a state policeman called me the next day. He took the report, and he assured me if it happened again, that he would pick this person up. And I surely hope it doesn't happen again here this evening, because like I said, parties involved are here. And I'm just stating that we, we have to correct this in our town. You come here, he as a policeman had the duty, I was a policeman in the military, to do your obligation, whether it's family or not, you got to do your obligation. So I'm just here to, to back up Brian on what he said, and if you have any questions, I have all the reports if you need them. Kind of threw things together, wasn't planning on it, forgot the meeting was tonight. But if you need any other information, I will give it to you. So I have to say.
Okay, well, you have a minute. Two minutes almost to go. You all done?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, I'll clear this off, and thank you very much for your words.
All right.
Will we comment? Yes, ma'am. Right there you go. And give us your name. You have five minutes. Ready? Go.
My name's Natalie Lyons, and I'm here in regards to a home on Large Street. First off, I want to say thank you to the board for answering concerning questions recently regarding safety of property owners. I want to thank you also for taking care of parking issues from same property. And I want to thank you for, over the past several years, keeping Myersdale as home with the ability of cleanup and moving forward. Growing up in Somerset County, spending many weekends and holidays in Myersdale, I want to see people continue to come, and, and it's nice to finally have a home back in Myersdale. But with that being said, on June 18th, a neighbor on Large Street started lining off for a fence. When they were questioned, where is your permit? They said, don't worry about it, I don't need one. My response to them was, I want to see a survey and a permit, or you better remove the, the stakes, because permit has to be displayed before building begins. Funny, within five, 10 minutes on the social media page, there was anonymous posts requesting for a surveyor, reasonable surveyor in the area. So jump forward, the following day, I went over to the zoning code office and inquired upon what the restrictions are, at which I was given this, which states, under four feet, no permit is, is needed. Four feet above on a non-corner lot is three feet front setback, three feet rear setback, a foot and a half each side. However, for fence greater than four feet in height, non-corner lot, it is 10 feet front and back with a foot and a half either side. On the 19th, I then spoke with Patty Ackerman and inquired on the same questions I'm bringing to you tonight. Was told, not by her, that there, there is a permit, you know, you just didn't get it yet. Well, we are now into July 7th, and there is still no permit displayed. On the 23rd, and I have pictures of all of this, construction resumed with posts being put in on the 25th and walls going up on the 1st. Now, my concern today is, I already know by the pictures that this fence is not in compliance, mainly because the third wall is the adjoining property's existing fence. So how do I find out where is this permit? How can this be fully in compliance when I have yet to see a permit and they don't even know where the property line is?
I'm going to stop the clock here for a minute. Could we, do you have anything to say on this first of all? Do you have anything about, I don't want to...
No, I have not dealt with this specific property with setbacks, but I've dealt with some...
Could we turn this over?
I think I do have a record. I can give this to you. Just recently, that Ed from PMCA, they did issue them a permit.
Okay. Could we have, then if you're making a complaint, you say that the fence isn't appropriately built? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Then could we, Patty, call Ed tomorrow and have him go out and revisit the site? That would be the only recourse we have.
The third wall of the back of the fence, and I have pictures, is actually the adjoining property, which is not in compliance, because it's a foot and a half from property line.
What I would, we're, we're down to about a minute to go here. What I would say is if we could contact PMCA, Patty tomorrow, and get the address and everything, and maybe you could meet with them when, when Ed comes or whoever, and just explain the situation to him. That's our code enforcement. Yeah, that, that would be something to show Ed, you know, when he comes over, but if Patty would be willing to, is that a problem, Patty? And have him go be as a... And have him go be as, so he should know where it is because he issued a permit. Is that right? Let's try this. And then if you're not satisfied, if you don't get resolution, come back at the August meeting. But we'll notify Ed that you feel it's a violation or infraction. Is that fair enough? Okay, their public comment, we're going to, they're finishing up here. Yes, sir. We'll do you, then we'll do you. Is that okay? One, two.
Mine was just to kind of follow.
Ready? Go.
Mine was just to follow up, quick question. They were going to do the cleaning out of the drainage system. My request was, I have some sandbags. I just, I don't know when you clean it out, it's probably going to be silt. If I could just get it left on my property, wherever they take out that drain. So I could fill the sandbags for a second.
Say it.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know what you planned to do, and I just was hoping to make sure.
We're, we have extra workers. These guys are swamped. It's on the list, right up there. So.
Can you just let me do it in advance? I'll move my hands if you can help with this. And I didn't want to be a part of this.
Thank you. Stay in touch with us. Yes, ma'am. Ready? Go.
Wait, no, I'm not here yet. I didn't say my.
I didn't start the clock. Oh, you're good.
I'm Deborah Fisher. I have a couple of questions on points of order for the meeting. My first question is, when the meeting minutes were asked about early on and there was a vote or a motion made, but it hadn't been seconded, when is discussion supposed to take place? I was looking it up in Robert's rule.
It's supposed to happen after the.
Second.
Actually, you want to get down to Robert's rule of order, you aren't required to have a second. But.
I don't think so.
No. But all kinds of places do it. And when you bring it up to them, they get a little bit, you know, disheveled about it. The, it's the discussion supposed to happen after the motion is made. And then that discussion is supposed to last as long as it needs to last. And if the motion needs to be remade or redone or withdrawn, then that's the time it should happen. Or tabled.
Okay. There was one negative vote on that motion, and it was, said it was passed as unanimous. So I don't know what you wrote down, Patty, but it was not unanimous, it was passed.
If I did say that, it wasn't.
Yeah, that would be.
I wrote it.
Yeah, we had that listed.
Okay. And then I have a request that you guys start to articulate your motions a little bit more thoroughly. They are shorthand. Like you guys have been working with her for so long years, like Patty get the note, you know, get it or whatever. And I don't quite think it's fair to her. And it's certainly not fair to those of us who are listening to what your motions are because we have no idea what you're actually making a motion on, particularly when it comes to money. I think that that should be noted out very specifically in every one of your motions.
It should be that way on every motion.
Yeah, correct. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, if you're keeping a records room in 2025, you need to start thinking about digitizing your records. Because this is, nobody is following it. But I think that it's a time to start thinking about it. Okay, that's all I have.
Deb, thank you. We always appreciate everyone's attendance here. So you have three minutes yet.
No, I'm good.
I appreciate you said points of order.
Public comment. Here we go. Five seconds. Three. Okay, public comment is now over. Thank you very much for all your comments. Shane, I would maybe defer my presidential report if you can read it to you. We want to thank the Legion. Would you want to handle that and just tell them?
Oh, yeah, definitely. So we're using that $2,000 donation towards the vehicle computers that are very well needed and appreciated. So thank everybody at the Legion for that.
Yeah, Clarence, tell them we, it's on the agenda.
I have one more thank you. It was really nice. It was bugging me when I've been coming through town, no offense, but at the square, the property really needed cleaned up at the library in the area. And just hadn't taken time this year. We have a lot going on in the family. And so I really appreciate, we had two offers. So the Hanson family were there busting their butts over the weekend, got everything cleaned, trimmed, whatever. We just went and got them some Gatorade. And then it was followed up with Jim Rubright, one of our local business owners that I really appreciate. He contacted me and said, who can I call? I would like to pay for the mulch and have the whole property mulch. So it's just really nice to see people, the domino effect of the positivity in the community and people reaching out and wanting to do positive things. I know Terry already has a plan for the mulch, but we have a plan B for later this year or for next year.
That's right. We actually do want something.
Yep.
There is one thing we want to get done before.
Mr. Mayor, the report.
First and foremost, I want to thank everybody that volunteered their time, worked to take control and keep control of everything down the playground over the Independence Festival. Police, I thought, did a nice job, you know, outside of that area and in that area. I thought it was a really good night, safe night with a lot of people, good fireworks show. So I just wanted to thank everybody involved in that. It was a great team effort. And I have two checks here. Probably already have the one, Patty. This is from June, the month of June. The check coming from District Court 16-306 is 554.02. And the check that will be coming, this is from 73 printout. Also, District Court 16-3-06 is 389.15. 389.15. So that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions of the great mayor? Okay, Junior Counsel report. I guess she'll be joining us in September. Emergency Management Coordinator, we heard Kevin's report. So Mr. Solicitor, oh, great one.
So the bulk of my report is going to be more of a speech that may or may not go over overly well, but it's life. The, as council members, you're elected officials, and I'm going to talk about civility. Even though you have a freedom of speech, you are somewhat restricted as an elected official to try to further what you're elected to do. Which means to not be destructive to one another, to not be down, degrading to one another, to not use third parties to degrade one another, and to try to further those things. Now, doing that, it means everybody has to do that. And to not, you know, private opinions versus elected position are different. And the community, when they elect you, and I know you guys are very familiar with the BIKAM system, but when you're elected, your duty is to the people and not to yourself. So it's about furthering what the community needs, not what they want, but what they need. And trying to determine the difference between wants and needs. But when this, when the meeting or any parts of the meeting break down and any members go after one another or do things that are improper or you do it through a third party, you're actually detracting from the community itself. And that, that needs to stop. We talked about civility a couple of years ago, and we got close to it. I won't say we ever got there, but we're getting away from it yet again. And we all need to keep in mind that you don't have to like each other. You don't have to wave at each other. You don't have to have lunch with each other. You don't have to care about each other. Okay? You can, you can personally hate one another, and that's great. But in this room and as a council, you're supposed to operate as elected officials. In doing so, that means you have to get away from what you see happening in society. So yes, we have some federal officials and state and other municipalities who like to get on social media and say caustic things about one another. Votes don't get passed on social media. Things don't happen properly on social media. Social media is a way to vent and to air things that are overly productive. If you want to be productive, you should act civilly in the meetings. We should present issues and actually discuss them, vote on them, and do it for the betterment of the community, not for personal desires. And you got to remember, even though the mayor is stuck with, you know, acts of catastrophe and all those things and police actions, he is part of that system. And when this system breaks down from a civility standpoint, the mayor has an opportunity to step in. We, we need to, as a group though, make sure that everybody is working for the furtherance. If you have an objection or an issue with what another, you got to divide the difference between public official and personal attitude. Your personal attitude left, quite frankly, when you decided, hopefully willingly, to run for your position. And even though we see public officials get away from this, I'll remind you, if you look at our wonderful Congress, how they will spend months talking about steroids and baseball and all kinds of other crap instead of taking care of business that is needed. We, we as a borough, you as a council, need to keep that focus. And, and they throw mud on one another. That mud does not help. You look at the communities that are impacted, you think about this borough. If we can work towards good and doing the good things, doesn't mean you have to like each other. Doesn't mean you have to support each other. But your vote is your voice. The people who elected you, their vote was to either vote for you or not vote for you. And even the people who didn't vote for you in our wonderful system still have a voice that you need to listen to. So I know you guys really want to hear me talking like this because they sound like I'm trying to be your father. Thank God they're all older than me. But that being said, like, that is a very important function. And that is something that our country, as much as we think historically has existed, has never really existed. Because we've always been the country who thinks that by voicing our opinion louder, everybody should listen. And it's not that way. What we should do is we should work constructively. We should work in an uplifting way, but not go and bash one another and destroy one another. Now, I'll say this, the public has the full right under the First Amendment to bash each and every one of you and to say the things that they want to say to a point. And that's a First Amendment right. Council members, on the other hand, are supposed to rise above those things. And mayor included, I don't leave you out. But if you guys could work together and attempt not to bash one another, destroy one another, or use third parties to do so, it would go a long way. And this is why we get into arguments and, and things that boil outside of this room that should never occur. Now, historically, and Patty probably doesn't want to say this, historically, this council, and I don't mean like the members here, but through the decades, as much as we all love Myersdale, I graduated from here, has not been a very productive council when it comes to destroying one another. It would be a great thing to change that. It would be a great thing to actually work for the positive and to spend time on the positive. So that being said, if you're wondering why I'm saying this, I want to remind you that as council members, I'm sure you guys all took the classes that are available for borough council members through the Boroughs Association that Patty made available to you when you were elected, because I know she does that. And I know you all took those, and you all know that you have a duty of civility as an elected official and as a borough council member. But you also have that duty through, and I know you all pay attention when we change the term every two years. And we read, you guys vote on a series of rules and regulations and motions that are, and resolutions that get adopted every two years that none of you actually look at or think about what they are. But as Patty knows, those, that's part of that stuff that we adopt. And you're probably wondering why I'm saying publicly that you don't look at it because we've never discussed it. We've never had open discussions on these things. So it just, if we could maintain civility, if we could attempt to maintain or even to somehow see where civility lies, it would be a great thing. So that's the bulk of my report because the rest of the things that I've dealt with this month are ongoing and, or last month. But we just, we need to make sure, no matter what public opinion, what your personal opinion is, that we're doing the work for the borough. And that we're not just attacking one another or dragging each other out, that we actually do the work that you're elected to do. I know it's, it's almost impossible for council members to be removed. But I would think it would be pretty shameful to be censured for those kind of acts which can't happen. So it's, it's very important that we do the work that we're called to do. Yeah. Of course, people have First Amendment rights clapping. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Really? You didn't pay attention.
Okay.
I have one more update under the solicitor stuff. South Bridge Street. So it is my understanding, we've had a house out there, bladed, on the list for two years. Mark worked it, we got the dean. Bids are out, and the last I heard from the commissioners and Steve, they hope to have the house down by the middle of August. So we're real excited about that. The bids are out, and as soon as they identify the contractor, they're also going to talk about, there's a couple of pine trees that really scare the neighbors too. And they're going to try to address those too. So very excited to see that project come to fruition.
Okay. I have, I'd like to add on to what the solicitor said about civility. This is year number 10 for me as Borough Council President. The Borough Council President, no one knows how much time is involved in it, coordinating everything. Patty and I speak a couple of times a day. Brian stops out at the office. I'm involved with Terry. The first eight years that I was on council, would you say, Patty?
I don't think you should go there. No. This is not civil. No.
But you know what? I am going to go there. Out of order.
I, believe it or not, as a solicitor, I can't actually stop people from what they say. I can advise them as to what they say.
Okay, I'm going to say it because it's on my heart and it's on my mind. You can shake your heads all you want. During the eight years, we had a wonderful council that worked well together. Terry, did you have any problems?
Now, you're bringing in everybody else to get, it's.
You're out of order. If you continue, I'm going to ask you to leave. Public comment is over. You may disagree. You're out of order, Deb.
Okay, I don't care.
Clarence, when you, the first, when we worked together the eight years, were there any major problems?
That's not, not a lot.
Ron, what did you think? Tom?
Same as usual.
Terry, you're wrong.
I mean, there were some differences, but, I mean, it just seems there's a lot of personal issues the last few years that I will be glad to be getting off the council because it's just, you know, the tension is here all the time.
Which we didn't have as much back then.
For whatever reason, yeah.
Okay. We have a certain council member who, and between.
Jeff, Jeff, we're not, Jeff, we're not doing this.
That's enough.
We're not doing this.
It's enough.
We're not doing this.
I have been trashed on Facebook in addition to by her or a family member. And Brooke Folk has been horrible on true things have been said about the Ackermans, which simply aren't true. A motion was said about Ron saving. Shane, you disagree? I'm going to give this.
Listen, you are just as guilty. You brought this paper in tonight as like an eighth grader, okay? And drew it up. You can draw one of these up for any time that we're making calls and doing work where we are charging or people have to do work. There was no need to bring this in here tonight. This is inciting. This is drawing.
Well, I disagree. Okay.
How about the credit that she gets for the, for the flood work that she did? I think that would bypass the $400 that she cost.
Well, this is going to, this will make great television. Shane, then what I would say to you, Shane, I've heard you speak horribly for Ronnie during an open session, speak terribly about some issue with the police department. I don't know what it is. Well, so it's okay for you to speak and you'll do what you feel appropriate. But then when I have something to say.
It is every meeting, Jeff. It is every meeting, you go over the same thing. Every single meeting. And you attack the same council member every single meeting. Month after month after month. Quite frankly, I'm tired of hearing it. Other council members are tired of hearing it, and the public is tired of hearing it. We're tired of hearing it. We're tired of hearing it. Just like the solicitor said, we need to be here working together for the life of Myersdale. Why did you have to add on to that right there? Why couldn't we just let that go? He had a wonderful, he had a wonderful talk and just move on.
But why is he giving this talk? That's what I'm saying. We didn't have to have this back eight years ago, Shane. So, okay, you know what? I've said basically everything I want to say. We want to keep the media under control. But like I say, I don't appreciate all that has gone on with the Facebook. Nasty things were said about me, Brooke Volk, who, Brooke loves this town and he worked like a son of a gun and because you don't agree with somebody. And then there's the issue of our borough workers and that whole situation with harassment and being followed by a, a council member's family. So um, like I say, these are things that have happened. Whether or not you want to believe it, I know the tensions are high, but I'm not backing down Shane in any way Shane performed as far as, thank you. So uh, it's going to be great television, folks. But uh, anyways.
You're really neat.
Absolutely. You're the one that was filming the meeting, not me. I wasn't filming the meeting.
This is America, I'm allowed to do that.
And I know you are.
But you're also contributing to the problem by doing.
And so are you. Okay, hold it. Public comment is over.
Where's our gavel? Yeah. I want a gavel.
You know, you run for election and then you come up here and then you get voted for president or get voted on council and then you could have one too. Um, code enforcement, uh, PMCA, no one is here. Committee reports municipal authority. Terry.
Next week, we, we will be flushing lines in the borough. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and half a day Thursday. So if you experience any cloudy water, it'll be from that. We was going to do it in May, but that was the week of the flood. So it got pushed back till next week.
Street foreman.
I'm over here, everybody.
You threw your loop.
Short and sweet. Um, no street bridge, we cleaned it up. We had county come in today. Debris gone. It's all about creek, everything's taken care of. We have the kids come in, they're doing all, they're doing great. Uh, we have most of the ATV signs up. They are doing wonderful with the mowing. Um, we're going to work on Tom signs, paving, blacktop. Uh, holes are pretty well done. So we're, we're getting a lot done with the kids.
We got the big log out of Frockery.
Whole creek cleaned out, yep.
And uh, the county asked our assistance and you were more than happy to.
Yep, we use our backup for everything else.
Mm-hmm.
Their, their kids doing good, I will get on that. They're, they're doing very well. Nate included, he's doing good.
I'm in here.
Anything else? Brian?
No.
Good, okay. And we'll be praying for Ben, your son, that, okay. Mama. Brian, come on up. How's the farmer's market going?
It's going good. I'll follow up toward the end with that. Uh, so about Marzauri Ambition Association, we conducted our annual meeting back on uh, 30 June. Uh, Deborah hosted a great environment, provided great snacks. Again, Deborah, thank you for that. Uh, we had a great turnout. Uh, we conducted our year in review and most importantly, we finalized our new executive board. Uh, I'll tell you who they are right now. I will remain as president. Jody Burnsworth will step up from secretary to vice president. Uh, we're wel- welcoming on Karen Oaks as our new secretary. Uh, Katie Billy, Terry Foster, Martha Albright remain as directors. I'm sorry, Katie Billy remains as treasurer. Terry, Martha uh, will remain as directors and we welcome Martin Hurrell as our newest director. Uh, we say goodbye Denise Garringer as our former vice president and Melissa Friend Walker as a former president and she's been an excellent advisor for us. Uh, and importantly, uh, we are pleased to announce that the Marzauri Ambition Association, we're going to return back to the normal schedule. Uh, we had kind of a weird year last year where the board just couldn't have support of normal Wednesday meetings. We're back at a place where we can do that. So our monthly meetings will return back to the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM. Uh, and I'll be back at the Oaks and uh, we believe that's going to increase participation. Maybe get Gene Missler up to a meeting. Maybe. Uh, and it'll just give us greater participation. Uh, so our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 16th, 6:00 PM at the Oaks. Uh, so come on out, meet the new executive board, get a snack or a drink or whatever, what, whatever you want before the meeting. Any questions on Mama? Right there if you want. We all go right to Farmer's Market. I know you had it further down on the list. Uh, I personally believe the farmer's market has been very successful. Uh, given the absence that we had over last year and in the previous years being up on the streets uh, up here on the, on Center and Main, we just didn't have a whole more participation from customers or vendors. Uh, we are growing bigger every week. Uh, we currently have 18 vendors, which is a lot more than we had previously.
It's incredible.
What's that? Yes, it is. Uh, so follow Maple City Farmer's Market, see the uh, update, updated list of our vendors and come on out and see them. Reminder, we are there every Thursday through September from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Uh, we are successful enough that we are going to begin a voucher program, whether it's for uh, veterans or EMS or anything along that line. Uh, we're going to figure out what those talks will be, but those will begin in August. And we're also going to start giving away door prizes. And that means uh, select vendors will put something into a basket. You come down, you get a ticket and we will call that ticket off. Uh, you don't have to be present to win, but you have to reach out to Farmer's Market to get a ticket. All right, so come, uh, come on out and get your tickets starting in August. And we're also considering uh, live music at some point in uh, August or September. But I got to check to see if there's any ordinances or anything like that. Make sure we can't do that, so.
There's no.
We're to follow up on that.
You're good.
All right, any questions on, on the farmer's market?
Good job. We enjoy it.
Brian, before you leave.
Did a question about the car show. I wanted to hear this. The car cruise, was that a success?
Oh yeah, the car cruise was a success. I, I don't know the exact numbers. Uh, Melissa ran that from Douglas Drive, so I was supporting it. We're a barbecue company, so I don't know the exact numbers as it were. We had a beautiful day though.
I thought she said like 50, like it was 15, 55 cars or something. She said it was down by.
Down a little bit.
Down by about 10 or 15 cars. She said it wasn't.
But it was really nice, we were there.
The weather was cooler than it was last year, not as much participation. But there was a competing car show going on in Summer Close by Norton. Uh, had one going on and they kind of drew something out of it. But we had a lot more, so they were doing the laps. A lot more laps this year than they had last year. Last year was so hot, most of those cars were on air conditioning, so I didn't want to drive anywhere. This year we had a lot of good laps.
Ryan, from now on when you come in, just do the farmer's report with the, that way you don't have to hang around if you want to leave. You want to stay on, but just do them both at the same time. Would we want to move the farmer's market up to C slash Farmer's Market? That way it just, because it's part of Mama, so I think that, that way we. Okay, good report, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Public library, come on up.
First, I'd like to express an apology for how bad the library grounds got before the Henson's did their wonderful work. Uh, we had a landscaping project planned. And with the flood and the, the windstorm that happened over Easter weekend and just the general weather, it got delayed and things got out of hand. So I really apologize that it got so bad. I'm very thrilled, I, I just can't say enough thanks about what the Henson's did. And Mr. Rue Wright's offer.
They're a nice family.
And I would like to uh, thank the uh, council uh, for the, the borough continues to support our library. And I, and we're in our fund drive now, so I'm grateful to all the community members who are donating uh, their funds to the library. We appreciate very much the support that we get. And we've been very busy. This Friday, we will begin our summer program. It will be every Friday at 10 for the uh, this Friday through August 8th. Down at Polar Park, weather permitting. And we have a program coming up in August. It's the uh, a, a major anniversary here for the county fair and Lynn Schaefer is going to be doing a program at the library. She had done it at the Historical Society, but if people missed it there, uh, she will be doing it at the library uh, in August. Uh, let me see, August 5th. So there's, there's a lot of good things going on at the library. Uh, there's a program that's in the works that's not planned fully yet. We believe it's going to be called Stories to Make You Smile. A little bit of local history. And uh, we also have uh, what was the other program? Uh, there's just so much going on, I can't keep track of it. We also have a book discussion group, a writers group, a Lego club and uh, just lots of books and things. Uh, not just books, DVDs, educational toys and kits, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Take advantage of your public library. Yes.
How many of the 150th anniversary books do you have? I have one displayed out of my office and one, and, and people are asking about them. We send them over.
We still have a, a box or two of them.
So what, you have 100 left or?
It might be 100. I'm not quite sure.
Because people love them and we say, well, the library, I don't, you've gotten any business from our end of it.
It has really slowed down.
But people really enjoy that book. So uh, kudos to that. Thank you, Terry. Uh, comment, um, Myersdale Committee, Community Events.
Uh, I want to say it went really well for the fireworks, which the mayor said there earlier. Very good turnout. Fireworks is great. And hopefully we can have them next year. They say it's going to be really hard to get them, but see what happens by the end of the year. But I think everything.
What do you mean hard to get them?
I guess the price and everything is just going to go outrageous on them. It's going to be.
And we had, we were $2,700 short, is that right Patty?
Yeah, we had like $9,485.09 in the account.
Well, let's wait and see what the price is. There's no point in lamenting about it now. We might just have to.
Yeah.
Either cut the show back or, or just pay out of the general fund.
Why am I going to be even getting them?
What's that?
The problem's going to be even getting them.
Is that right? Well, I thought they make their own though.
Well, they're going to get the.
The powder. I didn't know there was. Anything else?
Other than everything, we're not having another meeting now until September.
I keep getting asked. Um, so the borough, Jenny and I got confused. So the borough sponsored last year's um, back to school yard sale, like two weeks before school went back. So that parents, you know, could get some reasonably priced clothes for their kids if they needed it. But then Jenny thought you guys did it. So are you guys planning to do it?
Jenny's at the last meeting and she didn't bring up nothing. I mean, I think it'd be a great idea if we could do something like that.
Um.
Yeah.
But it would be like next month, so we would have to choose a date now.
Get a date started and some advertisement, yeah.
So I wonder when the kids go back to school.
I heard it was after, after Labor Day this year.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So do we want, do you want us just to do it from the borough this year? Because we need to set a date probably tonight. So.
And you need to get the committee involved in it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe we would do like the 9th. That's a Saturday.
August.
Yeah. And then that would give parents a couple of weeks anyway. We could do the 2nd or the 9th.
Yeah.
Um, it was really impressive. Last year when we brought it back, I went through town and honestly, almost every street had signs up.
Yeah.
I mean, people really want that. I've probably gotten 10 messages if we're doing it. Do we want to do it the 2nd or the 9th? I mean, maybe the earlier the better for parents, like the 2nd.
Depends on the weather too. Maybe we can always go with a rain day.
Okay.
Okay? Go, start with the 9th.
The 9th, you want to do the 9th?
Yeah. And then if it's a bad day, we can.
See you, Brian.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, the Renizons. Anything there?
It's the last, that's the last possible week I can do it until September. Because I'll be on vacation.
Okay.
So the 9th will work.
Okay. You'll put it in the thing.
Well, that's a shoot for that then.
Okay, we're moving along here.
Okay.
Council members, standing committees, police, public, safety, the police mini-split is on there.
Yeah, so with DAR, the last time I met with them and I've not been involved in a while, the police mini-split we had put in place on the front of the building instead of the end, um, will have to be removed. Um, and they're going to service everything from the end of the building. They'll do the police and both of those office rooms. I was just going to suggest, I mean, we were out $4,300 or something on that. I just wondered, I mean, I think we ought to put the mini-split, the unit itself, out to bid. We ought to advertise it. I mean, somebody picked that up. I mean, everybody's retrofitting with mini-splits. It's less than a year old. So I think we ought to put it out to bid. I mean, why not get something for it?
Will they give us anything for it?
I think when we met with them, they said no. I mean, it'd be nice to recoup some of our money.
They can't use anything. They can't just move the location.
They said not. They would give one unit that was big enough to service all the area. And it's in the way of the windows where it's put.
Is there a place in the building that, that we could move it and use it?
Use the ladies restroom.
I mean, what we paid for it, you're probably not going to get what we paid for it.
Well, a lot of the work is the labor and the ductwork that comes off a bit. And we won't.
You know what? Why don't we put that, leave that carryover on the agenda Why don't we put that, leave that carryover on the agenda, and we'll discuss it next month. It seemed like we want to think about it, but what do you think, Tom?
Yeah, we don't want to give it away. We don't want to throw it away.
So there's no motion to move forward on that at this point?
We can say this is removed.
Okay, personnel, anything there? Finance, we've covered all that. Refuge, what about the Harbaugh contract?
We have to receive anything else on that. I don't know that we're going to. I mean, they sent a letter and say we're using the old contract. I understand what Patty would like to see, which is what most people would like to see, the new contract. Yeah, it doesn't seem like they're moving forward with that. I can reach out again.
I just thought they would give you some kind of document.
Yeah, like normal, yeah. I would think so.
I knew you obviously were going to ask for something.
Streets and buildings. Flood control, I think we've taken care of that. Oh, did you hear anything from the DEP yet about a 20% match?
No, but I think we're going to have that within the, within the week.
Okay.
I've talked to them, and there's no issue with that matching it, but they have to go through channels to, they have a letter.
Okay, estimate to repair, upgrade uptown cameras. Where are we on that? Did we say we were just go ahead and get them done, or we were waiting?
Yeah. He's supposed to come either this week or beginning of the next.
Anything about that, they're not working?
I knew they wasn't working, but I'm not sure when.
He said it would be around $300.
Yeah.
Well, see, we thought it could be maybe up to $1,000 or more, but we didn't want to move forward. But you told him to go ahead, or do we have to vote on that tonight?
Some of them are working. I'm not sure which one I can get. He told me that they were.
Can you check on your phone, see which ones are working?
Yeah. How about, you know, talk about which ones were.
I agree. I agree.
I'm just saying, if you could find out, we're not going. There's a couple, sounds good.
He said either this week or beginning of that. And shouldn't pay off. He said might, might be lost.
Perfect. Anything else? Okay. We did the ADA restrooms. That is a comprehensive plan that we got our information tonight. Anything on zoning ordinance review?
No, we didn't have a committee meeting, so.
Yard waste, anything on that?
We do. So the county is looking into that. We're looking at a Myersdale area plan for that. There is grant money available, he says being looked into, possible grant funding. So we're working on that.
326 Salisbury Street, we discussed. And this, I think we need to discuss the fire alarm. The insurance has finally given us the go-ahead, to go ahead and get a new one.
Yeah, we received it once, 2010, here, just to know. Should I have the guys call them and tell them to come?
Do we know what we need? Are they just going to replace similar to what we had? Is that the plan? Is it the same company?
I guess the latest and greatest, because what we had, you can't replace.
How old was the system in the town?
Well, we've been up here probably 15 years. It was here long before that, so probably 25 years.
So we're getting away from the strings and the.
Well, could we have a motion to allow Patty to move forward with this?
Yeah, that's a no-brainer.
Okay, Tom and Clarence, are you going to second that, Clarence?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, we're down to announcements.
I have, can I do it under announcements? I have an ATV update, or do you want a motion to amend?
You can do it under announcements.
All right. So this is the latest and greatest. Let me see. So it was dropped off at my house today. So the southern half of the route, I like to call it a route instead of a trail. Everybody thinks the gap trail, trail. So it's more of a route. So it's cemented. The good news for us is because some of the areas outside of Berlin did not want to be part of it, it's going to send more economic development, more traffic to Myersdale. So that's exciting. One of the other updates is that we need to vote on something tonight. So the county will take care of it, but PennDOT has passed that they're going to make their roads open to us, which is an issue for us, because we have people routing the PennDOT roads that shouldn't. So I would like to make a motion that.
We'd have them amend the motion.
Okay.
Sorry.
I make the motion that we amend the agenda to discuss ATVs.
Hang on a second.
I'll say.
Tom, all those in favor of amending, say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous.
So what I would like the mayor's feedback on, but what we would do is, and this is open for discussion, the four pieces that we would do, we would do Business 219, Grant all the way to the end of Beasley Street. We would do Broadway West down to the bridge at the bottom. We would do Main Street, and we would do Cherry Street towards Glade City to the Borough Line. I would like to say two other things. Two Sundays ago, I went to meet Norm, and I saw eight buggies at Take 6. I mean, we are seeing some economic development from it. Melissa Blocker told me that this year, when they did Taste and Tour, they had tour groups come in on buggies and give them business at Milroy. So we are definitely seeing it come to fruition, that we see buggies in town, we see them at the restaurants, we see them at Sheetz, of course, we see them at the ice cream place. I mean, the town is benefiting from it.
Those were people who came from Bedford.
That's right.
Wasn't locals.
And the people from Bedford are very excited about coming up here and routing our trails. So if we make the motion tonight to add one or all four of those areas, and again, I would like the mayor to chime in if he doesn't mind, the county will do the paperwork for us and do the application through PennDOT and get this taken care of.
So PennDOT is good with.
Yes, they passed it.
Those four streets.
Yes. That's my understanding.
Those four streets have been an issue.
They have, especially 219.
Have to either do that by new ordinance or amending the current.
I think they already have.
Which means you couldn't actually vote to do it tonight. You'd have to vote, prepare an ordinance. You'd have to review it, then advertise it, and then do it.
Well, could we make a motion then to allow Mark to move forward with?
I have to know which railways you're going to do.
Cherry Street and, what was the other one?
Cherry, Broadway, Main, and Business 219.
Lower Broadway. Because that's a state road after what we.
All state roads.
That's a state road.
That's correct. Those four pieces.
Myers Avenue?
No, it's not. It was a state road, but it's not.
Okay.
Uh, Main. He said Myers Avenue, and I said that's not a state anymore.
Nope.
So I make the motion, do you want the motion?
Yes, please.
I make the motion that we amend our ordinance to allow those four roads, which are, again, Business 219, Main Street, Cherry to the property line towards Glade City, and I believe it's Broadway West to the property line down at the bridge. So that, and, and we would get that information to the planning committee. They will do all the forms for us. So that's Chad.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
I'm going to leave this here.
You got it? What you got to do?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay. Yes, sure.
If these ATVs basically direct to the mall, if your ATV signs are putting up, now if this goes through, those signs are basically used because the whole town is going to be ATV compliant.
So then we take the signs back down.
The ordinance calls that the signs have to be installed.
And then we still actually have to have them, because they haven't changed that part yet.
So I would just have to add to those particular street.
You have to get more signs then.
Actually, no, because it would be a state road, and you only have to put those when it crosses a state road. Because that is just as much, the, the route issue is not about route as much it is the safety of the crossing. So the, the state road part, you would have to go a whole other route and get permission from the, from PennDOT to actually place a suitable sign in a suitable area marking the trail for the.
But I think we'll want to ask Chad what PennDOT is asking of us as it relates to that. Like, are they going to do it, or are we going to do it? So when we get it ready.
For Myers Avenue, now you have it marked on the map. Center Street, and then do I put one going up Myers Avenue since that belongs to us?
Yeah, Myers Avenue is on there, yeah, that.
Well, it wasn't marked, that's why I'm asking.
It would be, it would be when it, when it, where it touches the state route.
But it's Cherry.
Yeah.
Do I put one down by the monument? That's my question. Would I put one down there for Cherry Street going up that direction?
See, I don't think that actually qualifies as a crossing.
I, I wasn't.
It would on the way down, no, it wouldn't.
Because you're coming right onto Trans Street, right here, by the monument.
So what about the end sign? Then you'll need the end sign. It's all going to be there.
We never have anything here.
Well, Dan, you've got the end sign.
Yeah, we have.
But they haven't been put up, so you don't have to worry about that.
Actually, they're supposed to, you're supposed to put the end sign where it leaves the municipality or the road ends, I guess, but it doesn't really end, though. Yeah.
It's taken, it's taken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. I'll look into that part. Thank you.
Well, keep putting up what you have, and we'll just have to tweak it at the end. But we have the motion, and so it's been approved, and you're going to work on amending the ordinances. Okay, next, appointment to the zoning board position. The term expires July 2025. And I had talked to Leanne Renzi, and she is indeed willing to accept another three-year term. It was advertised, we received nobody at all as of interest. So I think Leanne has done a good job. So we'll have a discussion, and then I would ask for a motion that we go ahead and appoint her for a three-year term to the zoning board, and then Patty sends her a letter if council so desires. So discussion first. Leanne has done a good job. She's agreed to stay on, so.
She serves several times.
Yeah. Is there a motion? Ron makes the motion, Karen seconds it. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Now, I had the text from Tom Deakins, and his term on the zoning board expires the end of next year, 2026, except this in July. So Mark and I were talking. I think Tom would stay on to the end of the year, but the solicitor and I had talked about it, and Mark says that if he's out of the town, he really can't serve. So Mark had the suggestion that, I don't think we should move on this tonight. I think we should ask Tom, you know, explain the situation, that we ask for his resignation first, and then we could, we have two alternates, actually. Sarah Jones and Jeff Brenneman. So maybe just move one of those alternates into that position. We could maybe do that at the next meeting, and then we're covered.
It's the function of an alternate. I mean, it's why you have them there.
Yeah. So at, I think the first thing we need to do is, because Tom has been very loyal, and like I say, I think he might stay on, but, but I was a little concerned as our solicitor, so we're going to have to ask for his resignation, and then.
When he was in to tell me he was moving, he said he was going to contact you about resigning.
Yeah, he did, we didn't really get, discuss that. He didn't mention, and I didn't. I, I think I said I'd have to check and see if he would be able to stay on.
Would Sarah Jones be able to, since she's the board member on the authority?
It shouldn't create. Yeah, it shouldn't create. I don't know if we've ever had, well, the only time that we've ever had zoning affect the municipal authority is on an ice cream stand, but that really wasn't zoning as much as other issues. So I wouldn't think it would, but I'm not objective that.
We would have a vote next, and we would have our council besides to put on. That's who we would do, the council would have to make the decision. But I would say we hold on it until we get Tom's resignation. Okay. Appointments to the Uniform Construction Code of Appeals Board, all three terms, four terms expire July 2025. I have, I contacted, I have four people who are willing to serve. I'll read their names in just a moment. Council would have to decide who wants to go on which term. I thought our solicitor indicated that you want us to stagger these.
It shouldn't be supposed to be staggered.
Three, so we would have to vote for a three-year term, a two-year term, a one-year term, and my suggestion would be the alternate would just be three years.
And we, we advertise for these?
Yes, and Patty received, nobody, I had to.
We got no responses.
No. So I'll give you the names, these four individuals, I've contacted them. Bill Signs was the alternate, he agreed. Kevin Yoder, Wes Teetz called me today, and Brucey Nepper. So I, I think those would be four good choices, since nobody contacted, we advertised it. So here again, Jeff Irwin gets on the phone and tries to get people to fill these positions. So I would ask for a motion, that we make a motion to fill the three-year term with someone, pick, pick a name, somebody make a motion. Bill Signs, Kevin Yoder, Wes Teetz, and Bruce Nepper, those are our choices. One will have to be an alternate. And I might add, they've never met. I, I wasn't sure.
No, we met one.
One time.
Yeah, we met one time, and.
Two of them told me they didn't. Wes said they never met, and.
Well, he was by phone.
Maybe he forgot.
Yeah.
And Bill was young. Anyways.
Actually, no, he was by phone originally, and then showed, so.
So this isn't rocket science, folks. Could we, somebody make a motion that we fill the three-year term with someone? You have the choices.
Make a motion, fill Bruce Nepper.
Okay, is there a second for Bruce Nepper, the three-year term?
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, all those in favor, say aye.
I actually agree with that.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now, the two.
Can we just go back on what the, read on with that topic on C?
No, because we have to fill all these terms, Karen. Now, the two-year term. Could we have a motion? We're down to Bill Signs, Kevin Yoder, or Wes Teetz for the two-year term. This is his suggestion.
I'll say Bill Signs.
Okay, okay, okay. Terry and Tom for Bill Signs, and that's a two-year term. And the one-year term, and then you can figure out the years, Patty, and put it on our, like you do with the zoning. Okay, what we, we're down to Wes Teetz and Kevin Yoder. Karen makes the motion for Kevin. Is there a second? And Terry, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. So that's it? And then who are we left with here? Wes Teetz will be the alternate. I think he.
You actually have to vote for it to be the alternate.
Correct. Is there a motion? Well, and actually, this would be a three-year term. So is there a motion? Put Wes in as a three-year term alternate.
Yes, I make a motion.
Ron makes the motion, Terry seconds it. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That is unanimous. Patty, going back to the other thing, I'll, the zoning, I'll send, ask Tom if he would send us a resignation. I'll, I'll do that tonight, and we're going to have to then move one of those two. We'll do that at the, at the August meeting.
Will we have to advertise?
Mark says no.
What, what, where?
You said we don't have to advertise, we're just going to.
Which what, the zoning?
Yes.
Yeah, well, first we have to ask and have his resignation, and then we can move forward the discussion and move over to it.
So I will ask him for if he could send a letter to the Borough Office, P.O., Box 60.
So Steve got back to me, he'll be at State College on the 22nd. So the 29th, the next Tuesday at 6:00 would work for him if we want to advertise that.
Could we have a motion to have a meeting on the, let me bring my calendar up here, July 29th?
I'm looking.
At 7:00, we're only at 7:00 PM, so nobody gets confused. Claire Hertz?
I told him 6:00. We usually do the special meetings at 6:00, and so I told him 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Well, we could just, it might get a little bit confusing. Do you want to make the motion, Terry?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, 6 o'clock.
On the 29th, special meeting. And Patty, the special meeting will deal with discussing handicap accessibility for the community center.
Can you send Steve the plan?
And the second. Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, we're done with that. Now, the FEMA property buyouts. We have two, three more items to discuss here. Discuss FEMA, FEMA property buyouts. Nothing there? Maybe we didn't take that off the agenda.
There was something about an email that you got there, and you said to put on the agenda from Jonathan. Something about, I appreciate the update, it'll be up to council to discuss what they wish to do going forward. I will ask Patty to buy a copy of this email to put on the July agenda.
When they're talking about the FEMA property buyouts, are they talking about, I might as if it's a popular one, are they talking about properties that should not have been located in the flood zone, under our plan?
If I could read this email, is that...
Yeah, go ahead.
It says, "As discussed on our call earlier this week, our PA DEP flood protection program can participate in a meeting with the borough to review the requirements of the flood protection program. I know the borough is well acquainted with the DEP program due to the existing Myersdale flood protection project, but we know that the borough continues to experience flooding in the non-project areas as well as areas affected by interior stormwater runoff and conveyance issues. I would also recommend that the borough inquire with the FEMA to discuss property buyouts for structures that have frequently reoccurring significant flood damages. This may be the most feasible solution to homes located within the flood plain."
So, that is what I thought it was. So, it's even though they suggest it, because you're one of the few communities in all the state, there's not very many flood controls that are dealt with, with Army Corps and PA DEP, you really don't have a choice on that suggestion. You need to meet with them and have this discussion. That's because you're the public sponsor of the flood control and the area that surrounds it. That is one of the reasons why some homeowners that have and have been required to have flood insurance did not see coverage, because their home is located in an area that is uncoverable, even though the federal government requires them to have coverage. So, I would strongly encourage council to meet with them and to take whatever steps are necessary to take care of that, because you'll end up losing funding and other issues if you don't. I actually read that one. Give you a start. Oh, I do.
Okay, well, we'll have to work on that. Set criteria for Somerset County disaster recovery funding. We have a grant of $4,400, and how many applicants? 100? Is that right?
No, we haven't advertised. No.
Fix on the agenda, set...
Yeah, so here's, here's... So, I work with Community Foundation. I've never set criteria or an application before, but basically, we're gonna, my proposal that I sent to council a few weeks ago was, they have to prove they're a borough resident, they have to have a receipt on or around, you know, shortly after May 13th, pictures if they have them, and signs saying they haven't gotten any other grant funding. And we are looking, I don't want to buy any appliances. It's gonna be a reimbursement. So, the county wants us to get the money out right away. So, if we can advertise it in the next couple of days, I think with the library, Facebook, everything, people should come by here, and if Patty can leave, you know, 20 of them on the table outside her door for people to pick up, they come, I think we give them two weeks. So, if we can get it in the paper, you know, say Friday, and if we can get it with Terry to go in her next thing, get it on Facebook, and tell people to come pick up an application, sealed envelope back to the borough, and then Jenny has agreed, we can scan them in. She would help me with this. And say we have 20 applicants, then we would be willing to give them each like $220 towards a hot water heater, a stove, a refrigerator. You know, it's not a lot of money, but it's some money. So, we'll just, I think we divide it equally between all applicants that meet our criteria as outlined.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna add.
That sounds fair.
No, we have criteria. And the Community Foundation of the Allegheny has approved our criteria. And Patty finessed the application, so I think we're good there, too.
Okay, and the last item, set a policy.
So, wait. So, Jenny and I, do we want a third person? Tom, do you wanna, or is two enough? Can Jenny and I just do it? I don't care.
They want to.
Probably should put "other" on there, too. People have freezers. Mine is one of them, but I'm not putting it for it, but...
We gave them our criteria. If somebody...
Should be "other."
Yeah. We outlined. We did washer, dryer, stove, refrigerator, water heater. There was a lot of water heaters. If they were gas, I know.
So, we need to advertise it.
We need to advertise it.
So, you should have a motion.
We're gonna give them, we're gonna give them two weeks.
Okay. Motion to advertise as recorded.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, did you make the motion, Karen?
Yes.
Tom seconded.
Thank you, Tom.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, and the last item here is set policy for putting up and taking down flags on Main and Center Street. Do we want to put them up on Memorial Day and take them down at Veterans Day? Do we want to put them up on Memorial Day and take them down after the Fourth? And then put them back up for Veterans Day? Do we want to leave them up? What does council decide? I know the Elks donated these, and...
Some places do. It minimize the time. They do like a week observance, so that they don't wear out the...
Am I suggesting?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna use the Fourth as an example. Say the Fourth falls on a Friday. We put them up on Wednesday, take them down on Monday, the following holiday, whatever it is. Leave them up for a week and then take them down.
There would probably be four. Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, Labor Day.
Yeah.
And then Veterans Day, we take them down. About a week for each holiday. And you don't mind doing that?
No, I, I mean, if I don't...
It'll save the flags.
Now, they're in bad shape for leaving them up for as long as they're up. But, and if, just per se, we go with those holidays, and something comes up, you want to flag them for another reason, we could put them up for that particular reason, too.
What does council think on what Brian has just said?
I think that'll work just fine. A week for every August.
And the holidays listed, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, in order, Labor Day, and then... Okay. Tom makes the motion and a second. Thank you, Terry. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Rip, rap, flood control, we're working on that. Any other items for discussion? Let's just go around the table, give everybody a chance to give their last hurrahs, and then we're going to Take Six. Right, Clarence?
Oh, great.
Karen did raise the desire for an executive session.
For what?
So, you guys would have to vote.
But what is it for? You have to give a reason.
The meeting minutes. There's litigation in progress. Marcus talked to my attorney. She was gonna try to be here tonight. There's nothing in the meeting minutes that says alleged. There's been no formal complaint. And the borough's gonna be joined in a lawsuit as if this goes forward. So, I think we should talk about it. But if you don't want to, it's fine.
Right, I think the better way...
What do you recommend?
The better way to discuss that, because you would be a plaintiff in that, I'm assuming.
That's right.
Would not be executive session, but I think openly, what she's asking for, tell me if I'm wrong, it's not that the fact that it's listed there, because publicly, we can't take away what's said in the meeting, but you can say that instead of like saying allegedly, we could put that, you know, this oral statement was made. It's the idea that it's alleged because it's not proven, and so I, you would want to vote to amend the dependence to say that, I think is acceptable.
So, what, we just have to put the word alleged in someplace?
Yeah, I would put it at the beginning, like, if it's alleged.
I would rather do that than go into executive sessions, because we have, let's discuss it first. Let's discuss it. Could we have a motion to, I guess, now that we have to rescind the...
No, you just have to amend what you were...
Just amend what we've, to put in alleged in the minutes. At the very beginning.
Where do you want this alleged at? Like...
The alleged remarks?
I'll double-check Patty where she goes, because I know there's actually a requirement. I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Okay. Did somebody make a motion? You probably shouldn't, because it affects you.
I'll make it.
Tom? Okay, Ron. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
That's unanimous. Karen abstains. So, anything else, folks? Let's go around the table. Clarence? Ryan, Patty, I forgot you.
I got a whole thing, well, for the man. The old, I don't know, contact people with the church, the old hospital there. Still sitting there. Somebody kicked in the side door, it looks like.
At the garage. I saw that.
Before we have another house that burns down mysteriously.
They're working on trying to get back, getting here. Yeah, I have to put them in the directions, right?
Karen, you were in there?
Mary, why did you... That's all I have.
Ron, nothing for me. Oh, great, Ron. Closing remarks. We want to get out of here.
Good night.
Go ahead, Karen.
I really appreciated what you said. I think a leader would want people to be civil, and I think this leader calls me and says he's going to be civil, and then is not. And I think we owe the town to be better than that.
Well, Karen, I agree, and I have plenty of, here we go. I have plenty of text messages. You're not the most civil person either, so what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I mean, you brought it up. I'm gonna say it again. We've never had problems like this until this started, Karen. So, that's my last words, but I'm not gonna, you know, stop on that. You're certainly not the most civil either, Karen. Anything else? Terry, Mr. Mayor?
I look forward to us all getting along as happily ever after.
Okay, it is 8:59. Could we have a motion to adjourn? And Ron and Tom, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. It was a great meeting.
Mayor had burgers at Take Six. He ignored the vibe.